On January sixteenth.
Recording in progress.
First council meeting of the year, so appreciate you all being here. And with that, I will pass it to Clementine to do roll call, please, and announcements of how the public can participate in public comment.
Yes, Happy New Year. Councilmember Barber.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffa, I understand is running a tiny bit late. Councilmember Smith.
Present.
And Mayor Williamson.
Here.
And information on participating in this meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is available on this meeting's agenda, which is online at isearchmonterey.org. Remote commenters, you will be muted until it is your turn to speak and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In the chamber, we recommend wearing masks and ask attendees to keep your phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with this meeting. Thank you for participating in your city government.
All right. Thank you Clementine. And Councilmember Hoffa just walked in, so if we can annotate that for the record, please. And with that, we'll go ahead and do pledge of allegiance. And I'll ask since Alan came in late, we'll ask Alan to kick us off here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And with that, we will go to general public comment. This is for items that are not on today's agenda. I'll request that speakers line up at the podium or raise your hand if you're in the chambers. And if you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand function. We're going to give. Who could that be? It was. It did actually kind of sound like Clyde. Okay, so and so we're going to allocate fifteen minutes of max total time here. And the council can change that if there's consent. So let's look in the chamber for those that wish to speak on public, general public items. I see three hands, four hands up for those sitting and then the two standing. Okay, I think six. Think six. Hey, excuse me, sir. Sir, just hold on. Let's check online. How many hands do we have online? We have one. So that's seven. So twenty-five minutes. Is council okay with that for the public comments? I imagine that some folks won't go to their full three minutes, but just to make sure that everybody has ample time to speak. All right. So we'll go ahead and start in the chamber. So we have the two gentlemen standing and then I saw the four hands go up. So if you are able, just ask that you line up. And then we'll go ahead and start in the chamber. So please go ahead. Sir, do you want to go ahead since you're standing here? Everybody will have their turn, so.
My name is Chandler Rowland. I'm a resident of Marina. There is a chance the California Coastal Commission will approve the MST Surf Project. The two new express lanes for buses between Marina and Seaside Transit Stations, destroying six miles of environmental landscape and costing possibly a hundred million dollars in taxpayer grant funds. This is, if this was historical Native American land or historical Spanish Latino land, the surf project would have been rejected by the cities involved years ago. But since this is vanilla flavored American land, city council members, mayors, and county supervisors have, to my knowledge, shown little concern on MST's misleading and inaccurate statements regarding the project, which is, has only one benefit to low income ridership by saving a total of ten minutes in bus travel time between stations. The reason the Coastal Commission approval of the surf project is that the twelve members are political appointees. Political friendships are paramount in Monterey County. So after five hundred and fifty days of construction on the surf project, granite rock stock will automatically increase in value and MST's general and assistant managers will receive either salary increases or bonuses. Politic- after all, political friendships are the rewards.
Sorry, and before we begin. Somebody didn't have their hand up. So so just for for sake of. Okay, 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 perfect. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I apologize. And I just want to make sure that we have a standard process in place so that way we're treating everybody fairly. So just so folks know, you're required to identify yourself at the beginning of the public comment period. So I appreciate the clarification there. Sir, go right ahead.
Good afternoon. Happy New Year. Steve Lightfoot, the man with the yellow van, LennonMurderTruth.com. You know, we just pledged that we are all for liberty and justice for all. No, we're not. We're satanic hypocrites protecting politicians for killing John Lennon. We hate the messenger with the evidence that's wiping our butts with. We hate that this nobody from nowhere live in an event is going to change the whole world and we have to go along with him. Oh, no, he's going to put Stephen King up in front of a firing squad. We're going to have to admit that we're cheating our children with lies and hypocrisy, evil. Yeah, you're going to have to admit all that. In fact, you've got just a little over a year left to get your heads out of your butts, Monterey, or I'll be moving to Utah. Yeah, see, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm talking about. Satanic Monterey puts money ahead of truth and virtue. That's why I'm figuring people are more important than place. People are more important than place. I'm going to die somewhere worthy of Steve Lightfoot. And you know, I was at a podium once in Santa Rosa, just like this, when the Loma Prieta quake hit while I'm speaking to the crowd, just taking the podium. And it occurred to me that for years before that, the entire Bay Area had given me the stiff. And I finally went to Santa Cruz for the first time. For two weeks I stayed there, gave it my best shot, no response. And I'm thinking, oh, my God, the whole Bay Area is failing itself, failing America, like the sign says here. And then about two weeks later, the Loma Prieta quake hit and the whole Bay Area got socked it too. And I pray that Stephen King dies before the story breaks, that the world is ended by an asteroid, at least the human race, because you've lost your lease on life, if that's where you're at. You don't deserve to be here. And I'll be proud if an asteroid wipes you out or letting Stephen King get away with killing John Lennon, because that's what you would have deserved. Meanwhile, what you're up to is trying to kill Steve Lightfoot in a traffic light intersection. Obama and Biden tried in two thousand and ten. They repaved the intersection the next day. They were so afraid of the evidence I'd find. Sixty mile an hour, I was T-boned when I was on a green light. They have a room that can control everything. San Francisco Forty Niners will probably go kipof next week with their football, because I think they're up to the same shenanigans, okay? San Francisco is a dog town right now, after giving me the stiff. So is Berkeley. Santa Rosa burned on John Lennon's birthday, worst fire of their history. If you don't think karma is going to win me over your BS, you're wrong. If you don't think that I'm going to humiliate you when I'm famous, you're wrong. You've got just a little over a year. Pull your heads out of your butts. And my son, we're going to get very provocative, like wiping your butts with evidence.
Mr. Mayor. Can we ask?
Ridiculous retard. No, you cannot. I'm not cussing. I am not cussing.
Get off.
Can't take the truth. Neither can you, lady.
That's your time.
Hello, Council. Hello, Mayor. My name is Dana Russell. I'm here to represent the Monterey Peninsula and Nanao Friendship Association, specifically to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, for writing a letter on behalf of the city and sending it to Nanao. We forwarded that letter and I just want to tell you how how warmly it was received by the people in Nanao. As soon as after that letter was sent over through Facebook conversations between myself, as well as many other friends of people who are in Nanao. They said that they saw the letter and were generally heartfelt at having received it. One thing in Japan is, particularly in the Nanao area, is there are, it's a very well, the percentage of the elderly population is very high. And with such devastation because of the earthquake, many of them have just given up, given up hope that they could start again at such a late stage. But having received the letter that was sent by the city gave them hope that because they were heard, they felt like they were seen and they were heard. And I just wanted to extend their thanks back to the city, back to you, Mayor, for having sent that letter. Thank you.
Thanks for coming and sharing the comments today and appreciate your representation of the Nanao friendship relationship. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Marshall Fulbright. I'm the new superintendent president of Monterey Peninsula College. This is my, maybe my sixth month. I'm here representing our governing board of two, which our members are here, trustee Libby Downey and trustee Debbie Anthony. I'm here to invite the greater Monterey community and a city council to a few sessions that we're having, designed to help shape the future of MPC. Community input is very much valued and I'm here to invite you to attend some of these, or at least the greater community. We have two sets of series that are coming up. The first is our mission, vision, and values review of our statements. Our mission, vision, and values are the staple of what we how we plan our future and our overall strategic plan. So these are important part of our commitment to continuous improvement for the institution and we will remain focused on the needs of the community and students, which is why we're seeking your input. This work sets the stage for our upcoming development of our new educational strategic plan. And again, how we are able to help serve the overall greater community. To ensure our mission, vision, and values align with the community, we have a set of three meetings and input sessions for the community. The first being on Friday, February second from twelve to one thirty PM on the Monterey campus and via Zoom. The second being Tuesday, February sixth from three to four thirty, again on the Monterey campus. And the third being Wednesday, February seventh from five thirty to seven thirty. And we have a series of flyers here that my vice president Steve Hagler has. Our next session, our set of sessions, is for our Marina Education Center. So the the greater community, including Monterey, approved a two hundred and thirty million dollar bond, which we are very grateful for. And that helps improve our, each of our three campuses, one being the Marina Ed Center. This center is what we are hoping to collect input on is how it will greater serve the overall community. We are very aware that hospitality and our healthcare work is crucial to the overall economic development of the entire region. So we're seeking input as to what should happen there, what can happen there as we are developing our plan for the future. Those three input sessions for the development of our Marina Ed Center are going to be on Friday, February twenty first from two to three thirty PM at the Marina Ed Center. On Tuesday, February twenty third from twelve to one thirty PM at the Monterey campus and also via Zoom. And on Wednesday, February twenty seventh from five thirty to seven thirty PM again at the Marina Ed Center. I just want to stress how we are doing this and we're being very public about it because we want to be included and want the community have input as to the future of Monterey Peninsula College. And as we're developing our mission, vision, and values for the future, and as we're developing our next strategic plan, which is the five-year plan, we want input from the community. So please attend and thank you for your time.
Thank you and welcome to the new role. We're glad to have you here.
Go Lobos.
Hi, my name is Shay. I am the general employees of Monterey Chairman. And I'm here first off, to read the very first thing I said when I got this position. It was a new word that I had learned, which was the word sophistry. It's the use of fallacious arguments, especially with the intention of deceiving, which is again, why I'm here today. Last time I was here to speak, I brought up a few situations where the Gem Employees Union is not being notified of things on the agenda, stuff that we are supposed to be notified sixty days prior to it being put on the agenda. We have historically and consistently always discovered these items when they pop up on the agenda and we have to come and run over here to tell you guys to take them down because we haven't been given the courtesy or at least follow our memorandum of understanding that that sixty days is supposed to occur. It doesn't occur. It never occurs. It didn't occur again today for item number nine, which is, we beg to get pulled down. Additionally, we were told that no longer it would be that new hires, excuse me, new hires are supposed to be, along with their orientation, allow us to come and talk to them about empowering them to join the union. That promise or has not been kept. Previously, it's been historically that we discover these new employees walking around, we're not notified. And we were told, in not so many words, that this was not going to take place again. We're supposed to at least get ten days notice. Again, there's a handful of employees that we've just discovered that are new hires that have not been notified that they can be empowered to join the union. Additionally, it's against the law. I don't know how many times I'm allowed to break the law as an employee of the city of Monterey. But it's certainly the city's allowed to break it as much as they want because there's no consequences to not following these rules, regulations, and laws. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Shay.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Manager and Council and Staff. I'm Bob Paulus. I'm a resident of Monterey. And I will always state how great a job you do at running the city and never really complaining. And I think you do an amazing job with the budget. But something small came up, and I know you had a long list of things to look at. There was a way, we first came through in the city, they painted orange lines on all the little cracks and all that. I understood it was it was a three quarter of an inch and a trip hazard and safety is important to get those repaired. I jumped on those, but I noticed that within the last month, a new guy out there painting and it's turning into an orange jungle out there. There's lines of orange everywhere throughout the city. I noticed where there's small little cracks in this, where there's no deviation in heights and they're marking those off. So it's making our city look a little more disheveled than it really is. And it's not a safety issue and spending budget money on things that maybe not as important. But that's just a minor thing that I bring up today and just thank you for all your work.
All right, and we will take it online.
We have one online public speaker and I'll let her go ahead.
Good afternoon, City Council and Happy New Year. It's Esther Malkin, President of Laguna Grande Neighborhood Association. Hi, Libby, if you're still there. I wanted to just invite you guys to a meeting tomorrow evening at seven o'clock at the Kona Rec Center that we have asked the Regional Parks District to put together for us to try and come up with a way that we can get more positive activity at the park as well as some educational things. So we are inviting pretty much everybody to come and we're looking forward to it. So if any of you can make it, it would be great to see you there. As always, we are still always trying to communicate with our residents. It's been a challenge because the only tool we really have is Nextdoor. So we have met with city staff and we're hoping to get a mailer to the residents of our side of the city to kind of educate them on what neighborhood associations are, what we do, what our role is in the city. So hopefully we can, you know, have that happen soon. I wanted to thank Councilmember Gino Garcia for spending time on Sunday with a number of residents here on the Casanova Freeway that we are trying to make safer. And I know that it's going to take some reanalyzing of some policies or things that were in place since this neighborhood was created. So it's going to take somebody that really has, that really cares about this area to do it. And we're really grateful to him to be showing that interest to our neighborhood. Just for perspective, we have, we are updating our bylaws because they have not been updated since the mid eighties. And I suspect that a lot of the other things that are happening, whether it's traffic wise or NCIP, other things that have, you know, haven't been looked at, go back that far. Lastly, I want to mention the passing of a neighbor that recently happened right before Christmas. And I think that tonight there's going to be an adjournment in his honor. So hopefully everybody can stick around and hear what great service he gave to this country. He served in three wars, including the World War. We're going to miss him terribly. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a reminder that the mayor did call for public comments and cut off that time. We had a couple of hands go up and I wanted to explain why they weren't called upon.
Perfect. Thank you for that clarification, Clementine. And and with the last public comment, I do want to affirm, we are going to be closing, adjourning tonight's council meeting in Phil's, in Phil's honor. So I'll share a few thoughts at the end of the council meeting, but share, I appreciate Esther coming on and sharing some, some thoughts about, about him in advance of that. With that, we'll close general public comment and move to the consent agenda. Going to request that we pull item number nine. Is there a request to pull anything else on the consent? All right, let's take it out to the public. This is a time to either poll items or speak to items that are on the consent agenda. So we're going to allocate fifteen minutes for public comment on this one. Is anybody in the chamber that wishes to speak on any of the items on consent calendar? All right, seeing none. Do we have anybody online? Oh, we have one. Okay, so we have one. Let's check online too before we start taking public comment. And I'll do a countdown just to give everybody ample time to use the raise hand function online. A countdown to five, four, three, two, one.
I see no hands raised.
We have no hands raised online. So we have the one public commenter and sir, you have your three minutes.
All righty, thank you very much. My name's Dennis McCarthy and I'm here as an individual citizen, but also for, or on behalf of the Rotary Club of Monterey and a number of folks that are here that are members of the Monterey Peninsula and Nanao Friendship Association, which I understand is one of the consent agenda items in terms of allocating monies for earthquake relief. And so I just wanted to speak very briefly. Just in terms of the city, cities of Monterey and now, you know, they're quite a distance apart, as we well know, but they have common bond and that is beautiful coastal communities, rich histories, fishing industry, and now tourist destinations. The relationship of the city started really in eighty-six and was forged between the two cities when a business group from Nanao visited Monterey to learn about the city's success as a tourist destination. And over the years, there have been delegations that have gone back and forth from each of those cities on reciprocal visits. In the mid nineteen nineties, the two communities officially became sister cities and continue their regular coordination of cultural and business exchanges like we just had with the delegation from Nanao. Nineteen ninety-two, the Rotary Club of Monterey started a student exchange program with a high school in Nanao, and that's been going for thirty plus years now. And we've had approximately a hundred students from there come over here for a part of the summer and some of our students from our local schools going over there. Bottom line, as you well know, they are hurting tremendously because of that earthquake. You've seen pictures, you've read things. I won't go through all of that. But what I wanted to tell you was the monies that that are allocated on that consent agenda are vital to helping them recover. And you're not alone. The Rotary Club of Monterey, through its Martin Hurd Fund, has allocated five thousand dollars. It's going to be sent immediately for short-term relief and to get to those folks. Our current president of the Rotary Club of Monterey has made Nanao the recipient of some of our fines for our next quarter. So that's going to come up to about probably five grand or so in addition to the, from the Rotary Club of Monterey. So the point of that is you're not alone. There's other people contributing and I'm glad to hear that the city is, appears to be more than willing to do its part. I thought there would be a vote on the consent agenda and we wouldn't have to speak, but since that it was reversed, I thought I'd better give our two cents on it. And that's really it is just help them out. They're good folks. They support us. We support them. And it's just the right thing to do. And kudos again to Dana, who is the current president, who has succeeded our Mayor Albert as head of the Monterey Peninsula and Nanao Friendship our mayor Albert as head of the Monterey uh Peninsula and now Friendship Association and doing a great job keeping the communication open. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you for the comments. And again, appreciation to all those involved with that relationship. I think it's the partnerships that help us all come together and help inspire maybe even folks in the community to help give to the community foundation fund that's been established for this as well. So I appreciate the thoughts there and thank you, Mayor, for for being here today. That's right. Um, uh, just for those online that may have missed that, uh, Mayor Albert has um just made a quick comment identifying that if there's any questions that there are very knowledgeable and and wise individuals in the room that can provide some additional insight and feedback. Thank you for that, sir. Alrighty. And I think with that, we will close public comment on consent and bring it back to the council for uh discussion and emotion.
I move approval of the consent minus item nine.
Second.
Alright, so moved and seconded.
Um, and I'll agree with everything except for item two. Just wanna register a no vote.
Okay, perfect. All right. And with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously except for
Item seven.
Item seven.
Item seven, register a no vote.
No vote. And then we're gonna pull item nine and then we're gonna ask that we uh table um item number nine.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We we ask to continue the item to next council meeting.
I'm gonna figure out the difference between continue and table eventually here. We're gonna continue. Um, do we need a vote on that or are we? Yes, all right. Um.
I'll I'll move to continue the item to our next scheduled meeting.
Second.
All right, motion and seconded. Any public comment on this one? All right, any online? Do a countdown, five, four, three, two, one.
There are no hands raised.
No hands raised. We'll bring it back to the council for uh a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. With that, we'll adjourn to the Ocean View Community Services District Meeting um for the consent. This is a separate legal body of the city that oversees the operations of the Ocean View Community Service District Dissonation Plant. Um, we'll go ahead and take public comments on on the on the the district meeting. And we have one in the chamber. Anybody else in the chamber wishes to speak on this item? I'm only seeing one person in the chamber. We'll look online. They'll do a countdown for folks to use the raise hand functions. Countdown to five, four, three, two, one. Seeing none online? Bob, it's all you, sir.
I'm Bob Paulus. I'm one of the principals for the uh Canary Row Plaza project, previously known as Ocean View Plaza. Sad to see after fifteen years, people forget a little bit about the water that we need here, but uh we are um still moving forward. We have a hearing set for April fourth in this uh Superior Court of Monterey in terms of our writ of mandate um against the Coastal Commission that improperly, without justification or authorization or right, we pulled back our development permit. We are ready to move forward as soon as we get that in place. Um, I hope that we had discussed in the past for the city council to come forward with proposal to write a letter to hopefully inspire the Coastal Commission to uh perhaps just back off its case, which it has, in our feeling, not much any chance of winning. Um, we're starting our own letter writing campaigns, which I spoke of previously. Um, we're getting underway now, so we'll be in time for this meeting. Um, we did have the uh state attorney come to us and started to have negotiations with Coastal, but uh that suddenly shut down. We made a numerous, five different offers to them, trying to mitigate some way to get it without a court trial. Um, they suddenly clammed up, so perhaps letters might help. So I just ask that you might uh consider putting that letter together each individually or as a group body. It would help greatly. Um, we're having others write those as well. I just want to thank you for your time. I'm always available for any answers, questions or things we can do to make things better. And I hope everyone got to see the Christmas lights we put up on our property and the bulbs and all that. We got a lot of comments from the tourists who actually liked seeing that. Thank you.
Thank you. When I first saw them, I was like, I wonder how those got there, but it's a, yeah. Thanks, Bob. All right. And with that, we'll go ahead and close public comments and yeah, there's no action suggested, so we receive a report. Just wanna check in with staff, see if there's anything on that.
Yes, there's nothing to add to the report that's in the packet.
Thank you, Chrissy. So um no motion or vote required on this one and we'll go ahead and bring it back to the council meeting um and move to council comments. Anybody wanna make any council comments? It's been a while. It's the holidays. I don't think most of us had meetings during the holidays, so I'm assuming there's not too much, but I see um Ed has his hand.
Uh, had a meeting every day at six o'clock with grandchildren. So we're lucky we caught up, but just was gonna say um holidays, I hope was good for everyone and happy new year to everybody. Uh, got to see Alan this last week. I've seen uh most of you somewhere and uh it's good to start the new year and uh just wanted to say that uh we're all back in the in the the go of all of the meetings with uh Ambag and MST and Tamsi and all the other uh service committees that your council serves on representing the community. So I want to encourage everybody to um, you know, pick your flavor of what you care about. Figure out what those committees are that each of your council members serve. And each of them have published uh dates for their announced board meetings, so please participate because a lot of the work that happens to um help to steer the community um, the peninsula regionally, happen with our regional boards. So um although as exciting as this is, every other Tuesday, we want your participation. We also look for you to be participating in all the other committees that are regional committees that we all serve on. So as we launch the first of the year, look for uh marking your calendars to participate in MST and Tamsi and Ambag and I'm forgetting a lot. So we all serve, participate in those other regional committees as well because they're equally as important. Thank you, Mayor.
So anybody else? Councilor Bob?
So uh I did attend uh the Associated Monterey Bay Area Governments Meeting uh last week. And uh you might recall end of December, we had received word that we got a um reap grant. Um, and that was, I think, close to three million that uh we we were going to use to help mid pen with the the Affordable Housing Project. Um, at our Ambag meeting, the director said due to the proposed state budget and budget deficits, which are looking pretty serious, that um it it's in the proposed budget, it's looking like those reap grants are gonna be cut by fifty percent. So hopefully that won't um prevent us from moving forward with our project, but I just wanted to let council know about that. We won't be getting uh at least we won't likely be getting as much as we had been hoping for from the state.
And I would just point out too that there's a lot of negotiations that have to go on between the governor's office and legislature in between now and then, and we'll see where the budget lands, but thank you for that update. Anybody else? None here, none here and none here. All right, with that, city manager reports.
Uh, nothing to report.
Alrighty. And then we'll take public comments on closed session items. Give me one second here. I'm trying to figure out how to use my computer. I haven't been using it, so. Um, so there's three items um on closed session. There is um discussion on impasse binding arbitration pursuant to chapter section five point four of Monterey Firefighters Association International Association of Firefighters Local Three Seven Oh Seven um versus City of Monterey, State of California Public Employment Relations Board. There is also conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to government code section fifty-four ninety-five, six point ninety-one. And then that has a list of um different cases that we'll be going over. Is there any public comment on those items? Anybody in the chamber? Anybody? Anybody? All right. Take it online. Do a countdown for folks to use the raise hand function to five, four, three, two, one, and we're seeing none. Right? And with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn to closed session. Oh, and so um um as stated earlier, we're gonna do this adjournment um in memory of Phil Meistis. Um, and I appreciate staff is displaying a a photo of him um um on the screen. Um, born in June of nineteen twenty-seven um in Santa Cruz, uh New Mexico. Phil served with the First Infantry Division and the First Calvary Division, both distinguished units of the US Army. Phil served in World War Two and guarded captures Nazis while um overseas. He married Helga, the true love of his life, whom he met in Berlin while he was stationed there. When stationed at Fort Ord, he was coaching troops in physical education and he and he and Helga um bought their house on Casanova Avenue in Monterey. Phil earned the Combat Infantryman um badge in Korea and Vietnam. Phil loved to drive and uh adored his classic BMW. Phil never missed a Sunday mass at San Carlos Cathedral, except when he was visiting New Mexico. And Phil was well-known in the neighborhood and always had a warm smile for everyone he encountered on his daily walks. He knew the history of the houses on Casanova and many of the original owners. He is missed by his neighbors and friends. And I'll just share my um own very small interaction with him. Um, I would pass by um his house on Casanova and see him sitting in his car. Um, and I later found out that he just um even though he couldn't drive anymore towards um the end of his life, that um he just liked to sit in his car to give himself a a different environment and think about all the memories and experiences that he had and um the what I remember from that is just how warm and kind he was as he waved from the window. Um, and to me, that's what community is all about. Um, just looking after one another and being kind um and appreciating us for for whatever it is that we're going through. So um it's an it's an honor to be adjourning tonight's council meeting in in memory of him. So with that, we'll just end with a moment of silence. Right, thank you, everybody. Meeting.